To order, we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you all for joining us tonight for the Board of Education meeting. Jennifer, I'll turn it over to you for roll call.
Okay, Tatum.
Here.
Willie is out tonight. Joel?
Here.
I'm here. Jeremy?
Here.
Becky?
Here.
Kelly?
Present.
Okay, we'll move on to item two, approval of the agenda for tonight.
Motion to approve.
Motion from Tatum.
Second.
Second by Joel.
Second.
Comments or questions on the agenda? Hearing none. Jennifer, repeat, call for the vote.
Okay, this is approving the agenda, Tatum.
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
I mean, yes. Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky? And Kelly?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll move on to recognitions. Dr. Jones, I'll turn it over to you for our extra mile award recipient.
And Dr. Schwanhauser, I think, is introducing our recipients tonight. No? Oh, Lisa. Lisa St. John, who is our executive director for elementary, will introduce our recipients tonight.
Yes, and Dr. Jones and President Carlson and members of the board, it is my honor to be able to introduce to you the front office staff at Osage Creek Elementary as our recipients of this award. Their nomination actually resulted from a phone call from Shane and Candace Miller about the kind of service they provide, the friendliness with which they provide their service, and that they're always willing to answer questions, to go above and beyond, and to serve their students and their families really well. So it's a great honor to be able to be before you today. This is Amanda, Crystal, and Chris, and they work the front office at Osage Creek, and we are beyond excited to recognize them as going above and beyond for our students and our staff.
Ladies, thank you, and I think I wrote you, but our front offices are the face of our school district, and you're always so friendly and kind, and I know that your patience must be tried at times, but you never show it, at least when we're around. So, thank you so, thank you so much. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. I'll tell you, as a father of an elementary student that went to Ari Baker frequently before coming on the board, it was, I always needed handholding by the front staff, so I definitely appreciate all that they do. So, we'll continue on. Up next is item four on the agenda, public comments, and I do not have any public comments for tonight.
Correct.
We'll move on to review the calendar. Up next is October 5th, Board Work Session at 5:30 PM. That'll be here, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and then October 10th is our Board of Education meeting at 5:30 PM. October 13th is the Teacher Work Day, so there will be no school. And then October 16th is our Fall Break, no school, it's a Friday, Monday. And then November 14th will be our Board of Education meeting at 5:30 here. Any comments or questions on the review of the calendar? Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Several items on the consent agenda tonight. I'll accept a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Tatum.
Second.
Second by Becky. Any comments or questions? A lot of items on here. Any clarification needed? Okay. Hearing none, I'll turn it over to Jennifer for a vote.
This is approval of the consent agenda. Tatum?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yes, Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Agenda passes.
Good, stands approved. So, that now takes us to our content agenda, and up first is a informative session. Mr. Jeff Webster will be continuing our conversations about attainable housing. Board, I'll remind you that we had our first conversation a couple months ago. This is our second conversation. The timeline for that will be, second conversation tonight, we'll have an entire work session October 5th to discuss this further, and then we'll look to come back to the board for a vote on October 10th's board session at that night. So, this will be a great time to ask any questions that may be lingering, and then between now and the work session, to continue to send those questions to Dr. Jones as they percolate up, so we can have a good conversation at that work session. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Webster. Good to see you again.
Okay, great. Thank you, Dr. Jones and School Board. Thank you for opportunity to speak with you again tonight, and likewise for the public that may be here as well. I will move through this pretty quickly, so that we certainly have time for you all to ask questions around things, and I think you had an opportunity to see things ahead of time as well. You know, this page is just like a little bit of why are we here? This is pretty obvious. It's not only issues that Dr. Jones and you all have talked about as far as the need for housing around employees of the school district here in Bentonville, but it's all across the nation, and it means some school districts, you know, encouraging people to actually have potential teachers move in as renters in their houses, and a lot of people trying to think creatively, and that Fortune article that just came out in about the last week or so, where talking about teachers can only afford 12%, can only afford homes near where they work. So, you know, the challenge that we have here is not something that is only Bentonville, it's not only Arkansas, but it's across the whole nation. So, that's just kind of the warm-up slide in terms of why we're here in that sense. The summary on this is pretty similar to what we said last time. Feasibility continues to increase, the excitement continues to generate, et cetera. You're going to see this about a 20 to 25, I'm going to call it 24 to be specific, as we go through this million-dollar project. Lots of organizations, that number is probably up from 10, I guess they have 10-plus, so that's accurate, in terms of people engaging, want to be part of this in various and different ways, and people talking about this being a model for Northwest Arkansas and beyond. You know, we kind of always thought that's what this might be, and even a national article already has come out in terms of what Bentonville is contemplating and looking at, et cetera. So, pretty exciting in that sense, and I think you'll see a lot more tonight in terms of the excitement of how we're doing these things. And y'all will, of course, remember, prior to the last meeting, the big question was from the Attorney General, legally, from a lot of different vantage points, can the School Board actually make this donation? And the favorable opinion came back from the Attorney General. So, I've got a couple pages in here, somewhat for the public, just not knowing, again, who we are, et cetera. So, I'll go through this fast, I'll actually start on the upper right. Nonprofit hospitals, so we were created from the Bentonville Hospital and the Springdale Hospital 25 years ago. They're nonprofit hospitals, they sell what eventually obviously has become Northwest Health, so they sell to for-profit. If you think about it, who gets the money? So, it creates, and this is done about 250 now times across the country, you create what's called a health conversion foundation. So, that's us, original corpus about 130 million, our assets now about 140 million. So, that's what created us, and then as a foundation, given we come out of health, we look at what are the social determinants of health? So, making sure there's good health outcomes by looking upstream versus waiting until there's a bad health outcome. For us, are there 10, are there 12, or 14 of these? We would say there's about 10, and the ones in green, housing, social support, and education, that's where we focus as a foundation. So, with those three that I just described, middle, social support, housing, education, the other important for us is the foundation that we deploy with what we, against or for, if you will, the green band as we refer to it. So, we call it employed at risk, people that, boy, you know, a lot of times it's referred to, they need sometimes 14 months of income to support themselves for a year. And kind of, we know the math on that, sounds like there's challenges here, and that's folks that are basically in today's AMI of 92,400 for a family of four, that's about 28,000 up to 74,000. So, pretty much everything we try and do as a foundation is deployed against that population group. Can be a little above that, a little below that, but that's who we are as far as, once again, who we are with respect to the foundation. A few things, I think I mentioned this last time, but big emphasis on the whole region, but just speaking to Bentonville as we are here today, a big proponent of your Arkansas Better Chance Program. I think we've invested across the last seven, eight years, about $3.5 million in Bentonville, paying for the slots for kids that are at 200% of the federal poverty level or lower. We also have a great program that Dr. Jones was a big part of echoing this throughout the community. In this case, it's what we call EAP+, so of course, the school system has an employee assistance program. This is leveraging our HARC organization to go beyond in terms of people that may need help. Everybody needs help. We've helped probably with HARC, want to say about 16,000 people across the last three years, and it can be people within the school systems, any of the school systems as well, so we make that available to Bentonville schools. The lower two pieces are just Bentonville itself. I think I mentioned last time, emergency rental assistance during the whole COVID adventure that we all lived through, we deployed about $4 million, household by household by household for folks within Bentonville specifically, and just other things we've done over the years as far as helping with the Bentonville Community Center, helping get that built. So, just so, once again, for especially maybe the public that don't, may not know exactly who we are, certainly the School Board, you guys do. The other piece, I had a version of this last time also, of, okay, what does that have to do with housing? Why are you guys here for housing, et cetera? We've got quite a bit that we actually do on this. We're a big regional collaborator in terms of helping bring projects together in different ways, helping get funding brought together by different institutions within our region. I was chair of Mayor Orman's Affordable Housing Committee during the last year, so the resolutions passed, the ordinance is now coming out from that. And then coming off of the rental assistance that we did for, I'll start with Benton County, the second one, but for Judge Mooreing, we went back, made them aware that there's also funding available that can help for a project like what we're talking about here today or other things. Benton County then appropriated our foundation, the 2.4 to be leveraged with our money and other state money and other federal money to go forward, and Washington County essentially did the exact same thing with the additional funds that we helped them unlock. And then last thing is, you know, we're good at bringing people together. We won that national award from the HUD Secretary on public-private philanthropy and partnerships being brought together during this last year. So, it's a little bit just for the, again, the public, if you will, in terms of who are we as far as within the housing space. So, getting into things, then, this, once again, School Board, you've seen this before, you're well aware, but again, trying to level set and bring everybody back up to speed. This is the piece of land that we're talking about. Great location from a lot of different ways, and I'll get into that in a second. There's some challenges, and we'll touch on that, but it's the piece of property that is basically east of the Greenway off, between the Greenway and S Street, if you will. Some of the challenges are, is the, a big chunk of that land actually is in the floodplain, so it becomes problematic if you're trying to make use of all of this. So, out of about nine and a half acres, there's five, five and a half acres, as we talk with the city, people in planning, architect, engineers, et cetera, how much usable space is there really for us here? It's about five, five and a half acres, which is basically the, I don't know how this will work up here. So, it's this piece here that we're especially referring to where the building activity would take place. Another picture of this, again, but the main entrance would come in off of S Street over here on this side, there'd be another, I believe the Greenway's going through here, so there'd be another exit that would come out of here, but again, another picture, if you will, to look at that. And then this is just, it lays out well as far as, we've met with the city and looked at where is the sewer, water, electrical, as far as utilities to be able to access. So, we've got first-cut understanding of that. It lays out well for that purpose as well. Then this picture starts to get into what would it look like? It's the first initial drawing. I'll go into this a little more detail, you've seen this before, so for the School Board, this isn't new, it's the same as last time. Multifamily here, so think apartment complex as you'd think that in your mind, and then all of these single-family houses here are one-bedroom and two-bedroom and a combination of rental and others that essentially act as homeownership, and I'm going to get into that. And another piece here is what we call a community center, so don't think the big one over and off of I Street, but a community center that can be leveraged for different purposes, and I'll speak to that. This is just the plan view, if you look at this, and again, we set about 100 units on here, about 60 of them multifamily, and then the other 40 across the other type. We plan a pavilion on the back end that would connect into the Greenway as well. And then this would be the view if you were standing on S Street looking straight west. So, importantly, talking about, again, this community building here, and I think I'll tag the team this slide a little bit with Dr. Jones, because I know the school already has some of their ideas as well, but certainly as we talk about beneficial educational services as well going on, besides just the fact that you've got housing for the school district, et cetera, it's the ability to have tutoring for, you know, teachers to do some extra things in the summer or throughout the school year, other type of training things, organizations interested in just wellness-type training, those types of things, being able to offer those. The next part is probably the most important on here is the financial part. I think we've talked with six different financial organizations from banks and other types of organizations that are up for helping with this piece. So, and you should know from our foundation standpoint, this isn't about building some buildings. This is about building community, and how do you bring people together in different ways? And I would say it's not just the community that will be living there, it's the single-family, multifamily that is around this. So, how do you bring them together? But the financial part, as far as personal finance, preparing for your first homeownership and getting people in the right position as far as credit scores, the income debt ratios, these types of things, and you're going to see this in a second, debt reduction if they're coming out of school, and you think about student loans and that type of thing, but even as a person comes into their first house here, it's preparing them for their second house, or we'll call it their forever house, I think that's the term we use, but it's, there's a lot of financial training for people to make sure that they're in a good position, and if they come into this, if they're going to wobble, and people, you know, some people wobble, that's the nature of life, we want to make sure that if we can see that they wobble, we can help intercede, if you will, before they get into a bad position. So, think about from our, the standpoint of our foundation, a lot of this is about community building and making sure we're doing things beyond simply a building. And Dr. Jones, I know you may want to echo some other thoughts that you had around this too.
A couple of different pieces with the new Arkansas Learn, the governor's bill, 75 hours of community service are required, and for some families, getting kids to those destinations to do that may be a challenge, and so I see lots of potential in reaching out, maybe doing some tutoring in the community center, doing different types of activities within the community center, right out your back door from BHS is certainly a strength. And then, as with all of our construction, Ignite and Chris Weeks was eager to reach out and say, how can we participate in this project? And they do legitimate construction projects from churches to everything else, and so I think they would be key in the whole process with this.
Okay, so now I'm going to get into, you've seen, that was meant to be a recap of what you've seen before. Now, we're going to start to get into a bit more of the details on how this works. So, this is where really the innovation comes in, innovation, some people can embrace that and be excited about it, other people could say this makes me nervous. But at the end of the day, what this really is, is taking some proven building blocks and just putting them together in some creative ways, because they're all known building blocks that are out there, different people are familiar with these. So, I'm going to run through these, but we're going to talk about a land trust, this Lytec Low-Income Housing Tax Credit, I'm going to talk about that program and how that works. That's really what goes into the multifamily piece of Section 1. We're going to talk about a shared equity program, we're going to talk about, how do you think about appreciation? And then we're going to talk about, how do you actually do the banking part of this? And you're going to see some advantages that get brought to the table here, I think, in a pretty creative way. And the other thing I should, I should mention, I think we've met with four different banks now, and remember, we're a public charity, and like I always say, we work for the public. And so, as we're laying these things out, you know, testing these ideas, does this make sense? Are we missing anything here, et cetera? Because, you know, we want to make sure that it's successful for certainly the school district, for our foundation for that matter, and everyone involved, and that it's a sustainable program going forward. So, you should look at this as, while I'm standing here talking about this, and we're maybe quarterbacking this, there's a lot of people's input that has been going into this whole thing. So, the first piece of this is the schools, so the donation part is donation that, donating the piece of land into Accelerate Housing, we'll put it in a land trust. So, once again, if you want to go and Google what's land trust, you can look this up, and I don't want to read all this to you, but basically, it's a land trust really preserves the ownership and affordability of what you're trying to do here via a long-term ground lease. It has the deed restrictions in here that maintains the intentions of the school, so you want to make sure that's preserved over the long haul. The little red line and below that, Accelerate Housing operating this, there's going to be a lot of policy elements that are less in the deed, that are important, that they're understood, and that they're administered going through this. So, that's another important part of how this whole thing operates over time. And then at the end of the day, what Accelerate Housing does is then extends a long-term lease to the different pieces of this, the three pieces that you see sitting there, and I'll talk those through. So, land trust, ground leases, these are all commonly done, and again, I'd encourage anyone that wants to understand more on that, you can, in fact, contact Dr. Jones, and I can send you links as far as to understand more on that. So, now we'll talk about this, you saw a version of this slide last time, I'm going to take you through what we simply call Sections 1, 2, and 3 laid out. So, if you think of what you would normally think as far as three-story apartments, something like this, this is where 60 units, two- and three-bedroom, and when I say $750 back of market, we use a reference of a two-bedroom today in Bentonville 1500, and if you're tracking this stuff, it's probably getting closer to 1700, but so, reference, again, when I say 750 back of market, that's with respect to 1500. I can tell you our costing on this today, we have another project that we're doing in Bentonville, which is also 60 units, and that came in at about $732 per unit for a two-bedrooms, to give you a feel for what I mean by that. So, I mean, this is extremely attractive in terms of what this rent would be. We talked about this before, where because we bring in federal and state dollars into this, the school can influence things, but you cannot exclude this for teachers only. So, we always think of, the whole project is geared for the school district, certainly the employees and teachers, the parents of the students, and other folks that are living in the school district. So, what do we mean by influencing this? It's certainly the school making, you're going to end up having a public marketing in terms of who can live here and putting that out there. The influence really comes from the school, making sure everyone in the school system that may be interested is very aware of this and when that waiting list goes out. So, it's that type of influence on this piece. And if you think about the incomes on these things, and I'll hit this on the next page, there's limits as far as who can live here as far as what the income is. So, let me take this and walk through, this is a kind of a lot of stuff on the right-hand side, but this uses what's called Low-Income Housing Tax Credits. So, this is a program that the federal government put in place in 1986, so some 30-plus years, tried and true, Republican, Democrat, doesn't really matter, everyone has supported this since 1986 as far as a great program, one of the best real estate programs that there are out there. So, all of, and everything we do here, you have to follow the HUD and ADFA guidelines. We can't say, well, we're going to do this or that and everything else. You have to follow the guidelines that have been proven since that time period. It uses the federal and state funds, so when you start thinking about, this is great, how are you going to fund this? A big chunk will come in from federal and state funds. It also enrolls other community bank partners in different ways. I don't want to go into the math of this, if you want to ask questions or cover this, what are tax credits, how do they work, who buys them, and all that kind of stuff? We can take you through that perhaps at the workshop if that's a question, but banks can purchase those, big companies can purchase those, we've got experience pulling that type of thing together in Northwest Arkansas in the past. So, ADFA, so that's really Arkansas Development Finance Authority, so think the finance side of Little Rock, if you will. What happens is, they're going to make this funding available so that there's not a lot of permanent debt on this, these 60 units. So, if there's not a lot of debt, you don't have to charge a lot of rent. More importantly, from all of our standpoint, you can't charge a lot in rent. So, ADFA comes in and says two things. One, there is rent restrictions as far as what the dollar figure is, and also who can live there. So, you can't be above that 60% AMI and be able to live here. So, they're making sure it's set aside, so think about, this piece is less about teachers, given where you're paying teachers, it's about your other employees within the school system. So, it's 60% AMI and down, and again, it would be $750 a month if we were to have it operating today, and then I'll show you the math on this later, but then the protections are in place, ADFA puts these in as, this is not 750 this month or this year, and next year it's going up to 1700. Those rents are protected, and I'll talk to you about what that means, for 35 years, so that this stays affordable for your folks and others in the future. And then all of the compliance mechanisms, how does all that work, et cetera, again, those are all in place, there's actually four levels in compliance that take place across this thing. So, like we said, open to BSD employees, parents of the students, BSD district citizens, if you will, et cetera, and it utilizes that public waiting list. Maybe I should pause here if you have questions on this section. Yep?
Board, you may have any questions on this section? I have a couple.
The only question I had, I think you touched on this last time, what happens if the income goes above, maybe not a lot, but, you know, they want to grow and challenge and all that, what happens there?
So, people will tout this program as one of the great exceptions of, if somebody's somehow getting some federal help or something like that, and all of a sudden, hey, I'm going to work hard, I'm going to get promoted, I'm going to take on a second job, and all of a sudden, oh, my income comes back, goes up, and then all of a sudden, you lose all this support. That is not what this does. So, if you come in here and, let's just say, for argument, the threshold's $50,000, and all of a sudden, you work hard, you get promoted, hey, I'm off during the summers, I'm going to do some extra things, and I'm up to 55, you do not have to leave the program, you can stay in the program. So, it encourages people to move forward in their careers, or if they have a spouse, maybe the spouse isn't working, to go back to work, that type of thing as well. So, I think that's what you're asking. Yeah.
I had a couple, when you mentioned on the apartment part of it, that it would be first come, first served, I mean, that the rental, there'd be a waiting list, is it first come, first served on that waiting list? Is there, do we get priority on putting district employees higher up on the waiting list?
So, I want to be real careful on this. So, this is, you know, not what Accelerate like to do, et cetera. It is, this part is very much via HUD guidelines. So, in all cases, in every one of these sections, you have to follow fair housing standards, so you can't discriminate, and all of the race, creed, ethnicity, those types of things are protected class, but in addition here, it has to be made available to the public, and then a public waiting list comes open, and then people apply, they're put on the waiting list, and then you go down the waiting list. The thing that happens is, not everybody that applies necessarily qualifies for a lot of different reasons, but you go down the list in that sense. But the big, like I said, influence part is making sure that people within this, you know, the school system know the waiting list is going live, so you can't do lottery, it's not just decision, it's how the system works, but when the waiting list goes live, then people come on that waiting list, and then it's first come, first served.
And then I had another question, when you say that the rent stays static at 750, is that for the entire complex or for that renter themselves, and if they move out and a new person comes in, rent could be higher for that new?
Yeah, so, so here's the best way I would, I would say this, and you'll see the power of the math of this in a second, but, but it, again, if we're starting at 750, ADFA limits how much that rent can go up. So, if a two-bedroom is at 750, they're all at 750, and then ADFA will allow it to go up typically with CPI each year, okay? So, and which is essentially inflation, if you will. The power of this is, is, so if you're $750 below market per unit per month, times 12 months, times 60 units, and then ADFA maintains that mechanism for 35 years, so you can only go up with inflation, so those of you guys that know real versus nominal dollars, in real dollars, meaning in today's buying power, it stays at 750. Will the number go up? Yes, but the, but that number, you'll have the same buying power, buying power, if you've heard the terms of, in today's dollars, it's, it's the equivalent of if you were still paying 750. That number, what I just took you through, is $18.9 million, the impact for the next 35 years of the savings for the people that will live there. It's huge, and that's part of why these programs continue.
Okay, thank you.
I have a quick, quick question. Okay, so, we have 60 multifamily rentals, 20 single-family rentals, and 20 owned to come up with 100, correct? 60, 20, 20?
Yes.
Okay, so, in terms of that configuration, was there some sort of, how did we come up with that configuration to where we've got 60, 20, 20 versus another configuration?
Yeah, so, what we, you know, part of it is, how do you fund this? Okay, and so, in some sense, I'd almost describe it as two chunks versus three, and I'll explain that. So, there's 60 that is multifamily and 20 that are rental in this homeownership piece, 20 and 20, right? That can move around, is it 30 and 10, or 10 and 30? That can move around, and I'm going to talk about that when we get into that. But the first 60, we wanted to maximize how much federal and state dollars can we bring in, because someone's got to figure out where the funding's coming from all of this. What we've seen is, without getting too much into it, What we've seen is, without getting too much into it, in any one year, the maximum dollars you can get from ADFA is going to equate to 60 of those units. So that basically sets how many units we could do there. Then we come back and we've had the initial conversations with Bentonville City as far as planning department on zoning, how much, how many more units can we get on the balance of that property? And that's going to put us around 40. We'll look at, can we get more than that by the time we're done? But I'd rather conservatively say 40. So that's how you get the 60 and the 40. And then you're going to hear me talk about this 40 could be 10, 20, 20, 10, 30, 30, 10. You'll see why I talk that when I get there in about two slides.
Jeff, I got it. Go ahead.
So how is it going to help Bentonville to recruit with 20 houses? That's what I'm understanding, that we have control over.
That's a great question. Can we get to that in like two slides? Right now, I think we're kind of focused on the tax credit, and I don't want to, because I have that same question. I think we got to be able to show that. But on the 35 years of protection, I just want to make sure I understand that, that after 35 years, this can go to market rents, whatever market rents are 35 years.
So, so from an ADFA standpoint, yes. From a deed restriction and those policies, that can be set within that. So this is taking advantage of, and so as you hear me talk 35 years, it's, it's only because of the ADFA piece of this. So once again, if public charity is owning this thing, and that's what Accelerate Housing is, we don't have an agenda of doing market rate, and we won't be selling it. That'll be another part of the deed restriction. So I think it's pretty good protection.
I just wanted to clarify that from my knowledge. And then the compliance piece, I'm sure there's a reporting back to ADFA because of the tax credits. And who's responsible for that? Is that Accelerate Housing?
So it, there's actually about four different levels of this. So the actual, so not the school, to be clear.
That's actually all I need to probably know there right now. We may go further, as long as we're not responsible.
Not at all.
That's important. So what happens if they're out of compliance?
So there's a, there's a cure period for a person to get in compliance. I'm trying to hold back on a lot of the technical.
We can go, I think I'll follow up with these. But I just, I think that's good for us to know that they're, we don't have, we're not responsible for the compliance. If they're out of compliance, there's a cure period. And then, you know, so as a banker, I kind of start running these terminologies to my head that we, when we finance these debt coverage ratios, what's your expense ratio, gross rents? What happens if, for whatever reason, they get out of whack, right? You're not having the revenue come in, but you're, you got some fixed costs and expenses. So you're not generating enough revenue to cover the expenses.
Yeah, so I mean, if that issue occurs, let me answer it the other way around. Again, who's not responsible? The school's not responsible for this in any case, to be crystal clear. So the owner, which is Accelerate, is going to be on the hook for that. I'll tell you this too, as part of the whole compliance and the whole ADFA application, ADFA, the whole financing of this thing, they're making sure you got an adequate reserve built into this, et cetera. So a lot of the ratios you're talking about, you're having to turn in all these forecasts to ADFA, and ADFA is comparing your project versus another project versus another project. Not only on the, is it near a school, which is a huge plus? You know, is it near walkability? All those kind of things, you might think of walkability scores because it's a competitive process. But they're also looking at how sustainable is the financial model that you have around this? And then another important point is, what's your track record on these things? So as we do this, we'll do this in partnership with a developer that has done these ADFA-type projects multiple, multiple, multiple years. And, and if you don't have experience around this, ADFA's not going to even award you the credits. So there's a lot of, and I'll just say that even developers we haven't worked with within the state, they typically don't get out of compliance on this thing. And there's so many levels of scrutiny, if you will, on it.
I think for the work session, it may be good for us to understand worst case, right? So what the cure period, what happens if you miss the cure period? What happens if this, this just project goes into disarray for whatever reason? I know we have probably a benefit that others don't, which is Accelerate Housing behind it and your financial capacity. But that's just one of the things, we have a beautiful high school building there. And if you look past it, we have a rundown multifamily unit. Or even worse, we have 40 beautiful single homes that teachers are living in that are looking up at a dilapidated multifamily. So just maybe some conversation for the work session around that. But that's, for me, on the tax credit side of things, I've got a pin in it, we'll get to that. That's kind of all I had. Any other questions on that piece of it? Probably we can just keep going.
Okay. So that was Section 1. So next is Section 2. So think of these, again, one-two-bedroom, I'm going to call them cottage-style, if you will. Here, we're not going to be bringing in any federal money, any state money, et cetera. So this is where, when I use the word "control", now you, you can say, hey, there's deed restrictions here as far as school employees, teachers, et cetera, around this. When I talk about the pricing on this, basically, the funding on this gets philanthropy-driven as far as you still have to buy down the cost of these houses so that the rent is only at $1,000. So our goal here is to make sure that it's affordable for teachers-type salaries, entry-level teachers coming into this. So $1,000, again, getting a two-bedroom in Bentonville for a single-family new cottage house, it's kind of like good luck because of course, we all know that that's not going to exist. So this is very competitive. But if you think compared to the folks in that, in Section 1, these folks are making a bit more than they are. So it's tiering this so that you have the right rent for what a person can afford in that sense. This is, you know, it acts like a standard rental home, if you will. Like I hit on some of these already, funded through philanthropy, still opportunity for community bank partners to be involved in this. This case, it's not tax credits, it's helping with the permanent financing. But then setting limits on what the household income is. So we'll go through this as far as setting the policy, working with the school. As a starting point to illustrate this, we'd suggest, for example, the 100% AMI. Because if you've got, you know, one's a teacher and she or he is married to a doctor that makes $300,000, I don't know that you want them using up, a little bit to your point, using up that space, right? So you need to think about, who are you really gearing this for anyway? And then you've got the latitude to set this because you're not, you're not controlled by ADFA and the feds and all this type of thing. So you can talk about what AMI. And the question that you ask in terms of, we would still think the same thing of, if a person's living there and it's 100% AMI limit, family of four, and that example was 92, and all of a sudden, they get to 95, you're going to throw them out? No. But what if all of a sudden, you have to have a circuit breaker? So there's things to think through here of, well, what if all of a sudden, the spouse went back to school and they're making 350? Then I think you're probably, at some point, you got to say, uncle. And you just have to sit down and agree on that, and it gets built into the policies. So that's a bit of how you talk about, the rent at 1,000 is based on what, if you go through HUD calculations on what could a teacher afford, ideally without being housing burdened, it ought to be about $1,000 a month from a rental size. Then the rents would go up with AMI over time, which is often pretty comparable to CPI. Also think, you probably want a limit on household size. There's just a lot of things to think through. Do you want 12 people living in that little two-bedroom thing? I don't, I don't think so. So, you know, you have to arrive at some of these policies to put in place. So some of these things aren't necessarily deed restricted, but they're policies and then making sure that you've got, in this case, Accelerate Housing. Once we agree on what those policies are, someone's got to execute them. So that's where that comes in. Other part that we talked with Dr. Jones about is, well, first of all, restricted to teachers of BSD, can be other employees as well. I think maybe there was a question on, is this only new teachers or other teachers? I think it's kind of lottery and open to kind of various teachers that fit in the eligibility requirements that we just talked about. And then this is another thing for us to sit down and talk about, but we think you probably want a limit of five years in this sense so that they're not staying there kind of forever in those houses, which, Joel, a little bit is to your point on how do you make sure that you've got enough availability of these? I mean, all the stuff that we're doing in housing is, everybody's got to keep doing stuff. But like, we're doing a fair amount as a foundation, but we're not going to solve all this ourselves. And we can't solve the schools' challenges all themselves. But I always say you can't get to 10 without going through 1, 2, 3. So you got to get rolling on some of these things. But that would be the idea, is setting a limit. If you ask us today, we'd suggest that's probably five years. But keep in mind, what else is going on here? It's getting them ready. So someone coming out of school, you know, if you look at this from even, there's, there's, how does a property manager look at it, which might be a little bit different than a bank, but not that much different in terms of, can they even pay the $1,000? And if this person's straight out of school, that's a teacher, goes, well, I want to move into the, into an actual home, maybe they can't afford it yet, right? Their debt, maybe they don't have credit yet, maybe they're, just all of the ratios you guys talked about are off. And so they need to get prepared for homeownership. So those are those courses that we're talking about. So we want to, remember, our heart is helping these people get into homeownership. I mean, equity appreciation is the biggest source of wealth for people normally. So how do you make sure they're ready to do these things? That's those courses that are going on for people that are living here or even a person that's living in the apartments to be able to move forward in this direction as well. So questions on this section?
To me, this section and the next section are very similar. And so I, again, I go down the maintenance and who's responsible for insurance. So I don't know if maybe you go into the next section as well, and we ask the general questions, unless y'all have a targeted question on this. Because this is where we're going to have, as a district, you've already talked about policy being set, a bigger impact on this. And then we'll, once you get through that, we can go and address Joel's question too, so.
Yes. Okay. So, so now we're going to talk about this Section 3. And this is where things get, I think, pretty interesting. And if, I hope you guys will come out of this thing, and this is pretty exciting as well. So again, 20 homes here, $180,000 to $200,000 as far as cost. Benchmark that with different builders and feeling good. Because remember, these aren't big, they're cottages, right? But this is getting a person, as I always call it, on the, on the equity escalator. Because if houses are rising faster than their salaries are, and they can't get on it, even with a clean credit rating to start, they're going to miss this and never get on it. So that's where from, I think, if you think about this, you want to help people to get into a homeownership-type situation. So then, let's pause before I go into this. And this might sound like some obvious questions, but why do you want to own a house? And I don't know if this is a perfect answer, this would be some shots at our answer. But I think the number one, far and away, reason is the equity appreciation. This is how you create wealth for your family and future generations, et cetera, et cetera. Also, the return of the principal as compared to making rent payments because rent just, there it went, and that's the end of it. So, you know, essentially, the principal part is you're paying down the house. And so it's not the appreciation part, but it's buying off the house, if you will. Usually you have an interest deduction, long-term ownership, and then you can put in all of the list of qualitative personal touch and fill in the blank on a lot of great things there. But I think the biggest thing, I think these aren't too bad a rank order, that equity appreciation is the big piece. But then what are the barriers on the other side? I mean, are there houses even available? I think we know the answer to that. And then, and then if there are houses, what's the cost of the house? They're pretty expensive in Bentonville. You got to come up with a down payment, got to pay, depending on down payment, you got to pay the principal mortgage insurance, and after pay property taxes, we got closing costs, maintenance costs, insurance costs, interest rates, depending on where they are, and they're super high right now. You've got benefits, why I want to own a house, but man, there's a lot on that right-hand side. So what I'm going to take you through now is a way where we think you can bring as much on the left and eliminate as many of the things on the right-hand side as possible. So what does this mean? So there's a lot on this page, and let me talk, talk you through this. And Kelly, this will start hitting some of the questions that you are going to ask on as well. So what we propose to use is what's called a shared equity program. So if you think Legacy Village, and how, if some of you know how Legacy Village works, it's like that. So what does that mean? It means during this whole thing, when we say homeownership, technically, Accelerate will pay for and own the house during this whole time period. So there is no title that is going to go into somebody's hand. Accelerate is owning this through the whole thing. And our understanding and talking with other folks here in Bentonville, likely because we're a nonprofit, will probably have a tax-exempt status. Not guaranteed yet, but lots of people are telling us that. And, oh, so we can make more money. Oh yeah, hold it. We actually put money into stuff. This is not about us making money, this is how do we keep taking costs out of the system? So all of a sudden, this teacher that's living there in our house that we own and it's tax-exempt, all of a sudden, there's a whole tax piece that comes out of this, which is a benefit to that teacher. It's going to act like homeownership, but it isn't. So, so they're going to make a principal and interest payment. They'll make that to Accelerate Housing. And so one question someone asked, so let me answer it right now, that you haven't quite yet thought to ask is, well, usually when you're making an interest payment, interest is deductible, right? Well, if they're making that principal and interest payment to us, the interest isn't deductible because it's not officially a mortgage, right? But when you look at, okay, 6% interest and $200,000, that's about $12,000. If you look at the standard deduction, it's well above $13,000. These folks probably wouldn't be itemizing anyway. So we go, okay, so that's not going to penalize a person in that sense. So it's going to allow for equity participation and recovery of their principal on exit. So if they're in here, and I'm going to describe this as five years again, at the end of five years, just like if you sold your house, you're all of a sudden going to get equity appreciation, and you're going to get your principal back that you paid into this. So Kelly, you started asking these questions. Insurance, we own the house. So they're only, it's, think of this now as renters' insurance. They're only paying insurance on the contents of their house. But the cost of all the insurance on this stuff, that, that's back with us. And forever, maybe the workshop or others of you guys that are the financially oriented, take me through the sustainability thing, we can do that as well. But, but they're not paying that insurance. I already talked about this, but I'm going to get into this more here in a second. It provides a balance between equity gain and enduring affordability. If you go, okay, this house is $200,000 to start, and then, you know, it's Bentonville here of late, it goes crazy and it's $400,000, all right, high-five that first person. But you know what's going to happen to the second person? They can't afford to buy that house. And then the whole project collapses because, because you have not maintained this from an affordability standpoint. So you've got to do this in a way where, hey, there's equity gain for the first person. You're setting them up for their second house. And so we're going through the math of that to make sure that can happen. But you've got to do it in a way such that the second person can also buy into this, just like the first person. I'll show you that here on the next page. You're going to have control over the duration of how long a person's here. So if you have a teacher that's working for you, and for whatever reason, they're not working for you anymore, and we don't have to go into why, but they're not, you can't say on top of that, you got to sell your house. You can't say that. But to be in this program, you can say, as a right to be in this program, you have to be an employee of Bentonville Schools. And if you're not, then you, you've got an exit amount of time. Again, got to sit down, is it three months, five months? How does this work? But legally, you can do this because they're not the actual purchaser of the house, if you follow what I'm saying. So this, you start thinking about it, it gets you a, all of this whole program, when I keep going through this, is going to be a great advantage for recruiting. And there'll be as many houses as one can do, but it's also a retention tool for you as well. And then at the end of five years, okay, so a person is going to move out. All of the transition costs of, okay, the change of document, got to get a Realtor, got to get appraiser, title companies, closing costs, all those costs come out of the system. Because it's not really being sold again, we still own it. You're just going to set up for the next person to be moving in. The common areas you ask this question is maintained by, centrally by property management. So, and remember, we're doing this across all of the multifamily. So you're not going to have multifamily rundown and the other part looks good, or vice versa. It's property management and all of, the whole maintenance of everything is done centrally. The plan is, all of the lawns and everything are done centrally. So you're not going, well, how come that dude or whatever won't mow their lawn or something like that? No, by the way, they don't have to buy lawnmower. So I mean, our, remember, our goal here is, how do we, how do we set folks up for the best success on this? And then I'm going to show you this in a couple of the next two pages. It's structured to position this teacher that is in the shared equity program for their next home. And, and another question for you, if you guys want this ahead of time, where'd you guys come up with this shared equity program? Boom, I can send you a link. Legacy Village does a version of this, of course, it's senior living. But I can send you links from where this is done in other cities around the country. So once again, remember, I talked about, we're using building blocks that somebody else has done on this. So that's the, the shared equity piece of it. Well, then, then the next part, I remember that last building block, you start talking about the bank part of this. And when we first started, we said, well, if you've got this ground lease and all of a sudden, a person is going to buy it, you know, conventionally, you're going to have a problem with the banks. It's not impossible, but they're going to have a problem because the person owning the house is not the same as the person owning the land underneath. So the banks are going to go, okay, we're going to have to think on this one. And it can be an issue, it doesn't guarantee it's an issue. But, but then the next part is, depending on when that person, if they truly own it, goes to sell it, how are you going to come up with, with what the appraised value is? Because you have a non- Because you have a non-liquid market, it can only be sold to a teacher. So now you're going to get a distorted value on this thing. And so banks are going, oh, man, I, I don't know about this. So that's where we said, well, what if we're the bank? And what if we do this as a shared equity program, everything you just saw? Well, then all of a sudden, you hit point number one here. If we're the bank, and we can be the bank from an asset standpoint, I think you guys know that, right? Then we have no issue with us owning the land underneath housing that we own, because we own them both, and we are the bank. If you think about that. Point number two, you know, we've talked with bankers, and we said, well, why do you guys require a down payment? Well, little bit skin in the game. And if all of a sudden, the house, housing market drops, and for whatever reason, financially, the person can't make their payments, and they have to foreclose on it, they're going to be stuck with a house. Of which I said, well, I'm already stuck with a house, I own the house. So from our vantage point, we're not going to charge a down payment on this, because there's no need to do it from our standpoint. You want to make sure there's skin in the game? And I think there's ways, we work with the school to ensure, hey, is this the right teacher? Are they, from y'all's standpoint, you know, on solid enough ground and that type of thing? But we don't have to charge a down payment, we don't have to charge PMI insurance. Right? Because again, our vantage point on this. Then we come to the, it's time for interest rates. Well, then we're, oh yeah, public charity, we make grants. We fund things for people. And our board, we look around the table and say, where do we want to be on interest rate? And I can tell you, the answer will be market or less. So you've got another advantage for folks moving into this. Well, then, then comes the, what we say, the number one piece on this. If you think about taking costs out, taking, there, no insurance to pay as far as the building, no closing costs, no PMI, low interest rate, no down payment on this thing. But tell me about this equity part. So this gets important. And again, I can send you a link to this, we're not just making this part up. So on the equity gain, what other people do is they go, okay, that $200,000 house, we're going to have the, the appreciation go up with AMI. So it's in, it's called an index-based appreciation. So again, boom, click, here's how it works, I can show you other cities doing this. So that 200,000, it goes up with AMI. So let's say it's 3% a year. So it's controlling how much equity this thing can go up. And then at five years, it's gone up, 200,000 is going to go up to 232,000, something like this, as far as 3% a year, if that's where AMI is. And then they're going to participate in that equity gain, and they're going to get their principal back that they paid into this, at the end of that. Another important, super important point on this. By tying it to, to AMI, the next teacher in line, and this is assuming that you guys' increases are going up with about AMI, they're in the same position as the first person. So now it's, you, you perpetuate the whole affordability of this thing. So, you know, like, you, you can't like teacher one too much, because you're going to have a problem for teacher two, right? So you're trying to hit this balance to make sure that you're setting the first person up for what happens when they go into a, a normal house, if you will, outside the program. Make sure we've done well by them, but you've got to make sure you've set it up for the second teacher coming in. That's exactly what this mechanism does for you. So it probably got your heads turning, like spinning a lot on, on this, which is good. We're talking this today, and we come back and talk more at, at that, uh, you can ask questions now, but we can talk more at the, uh, at the workshop. But let me pause here.
Lots more information given out, what other questions have been generated?
I was curious as to why you have some houses as shared equity and others more rental. Why not just do both, shared equity?
Yeah, so that's a, a great, um, great question. So in this, when we go through the math, this would be about 1,500. And again, what's the fair market right now, or market rate for a two-bedroom rental? 1,500. So coming into the house, no down payment, no PMI, et cetera, they'd be paying 1,500. The rental would be about 1,000. So they are paying somewhat more. And some people may not, from a credit, et cetera, standpoint, be ready to go into that house yet. So here's the other part to your question, where you ask about, well, why is it 20 and 20, et cetera? So if a person's in the rental to start with, and hey, I need a year or two just to get my credit score in line and everything else, and they go, okay, and you know what, my spouse is about ready to finish school, I'm going to have extra income, et cetera, from that, or I'm going to work during the summer, whatever it is. And they go, well, I want to go into the shared equity program. We go, okay, and so pack your boxes and move. Wait a minute, you're already in the house. So we convert them into it. So now all of a sudden, we have 21 houses that are in the shared equity program. And it depends on, on priorities for you guys, or is it, like, are most, do you really want a big emphasis on, on brain new folks coming in that are really in the rental part? Then we emphasize that, and we start out with 30 of those and only 10 on the other side. So we've got latitude to move these back and forth. It's another thing that we can do as a foundation, which is a bit harder to do if you're the bank, or if you're a conventional bank, I think certain people would know that. So, um, yeah.
I have one more. What if something happens to y'all and y'all go away?
I've got the root nail right here.
I mean, is that something that could be covered? You've talked a lot, if we set policy right, like, would things roll, we just would make a policy for that within the deed, or?
Yeah, and, and certainly, all of the, it, it will all go into the deed, and it will certainly, you know, I'm, I'm kind of an old guy here. So it's certainly going to endure past me, but it needs to endure past any of our current staff and the foundation going out forward, yeah.
Tatum, I think that's a good, good question. I mean, that's, that's our role as the board, is to, to think.
Absolutely.
Legacy, because this could very well be a legacy project that's around much later than we are. So I appreciate that for sure.
That, that was, I'm glad you asked that, because I've got it too, because we all remember '08, when we had builder-finance subdivisions around here that everybody lost their homes, because the builder went under, wasn't paying rent, and so, or the mortgages they thought. So that, that part can, nothing concerned me, but I just want to make sure that we, that I understand how that works.
So from our standpoint, we have all these houses, I mean, you know, if we're saying the, the, I mean, how bad of a downside do we want to talk? I mean, if the school shuts down and there's no teachers to pay and, and all this kind of stuff, you know, you can think that through. But from the standpoint of, if all of a sudden, the value of these $200,000 houses, all of a sudden drops to 150, and let's just say on the shared equity side, there's 20 of them, so $4 million drops to, 150 each drops to 3 million. Well, our portfolio has just gone from 140 million dollars down to, in total, down to, you know, a, a million dollars. We're, we're worth 139 as a foundation now. So from our standpoint, it's just a paper loss, in short, yeah.
A lot of that will be the underwriting of, of the Accelerate Foundation. And I, I have a note here, you know, an annual review of the project and, and the owner. Just, just to see, you know, a forward-looking consideration, do, do they still look healthy, and they still look strong? That'll definitely be something we want to have a conversation about.
And another part, thank you, reminded me a, a piece on this too. Another thing that, that, you know, the, and I'm not a banker, but you know, the bank typically, as a person gets ready, they're going to go through all kinds of credit scores, and, and debt-to-expense ratios, and income ratios, and all this type of thing, great. And then, you know, the person qualifies and goes in. What we plan to do is each year, or maybe we, it, we determine even more often, we sit down with them again, how are you doing? Because you know what, you're in this, this first homeowner, shared equity program, but you know what, you're taking on a lot of debt, and a lot of debt, and uh-oh, you're getting in trouble and nobody knows it. So that's something that the bank doesn't normally do. I suppose they could, but it's not what they normally do, but we're going to, because we don't want them to fall. We want to make sure, if they're in this for five years, what happens at the end of five years? They come out and all of a sudden, they've got their equity, and they've got their principal paid in, and they can't buy another house, because oops. And you can a little bit say, they need to own their, their, you know, it's, their life's their fault, or however you want to say it. But we want to be engaged with them to understand how they're doing. And if they're going to start to, to veer off, we want to catch them before they fall. So remember, that's where we're coming from as a foundation on this, which isn't what a, a normal, I'm going to build a building, I'm going to finance it, et cetera, developer or the bank would do. It's not quite what they do, right? So I, I think there's some, hopefully you're going to see that, and you, you hear that coming through as far as what I mean. I think maybe two more pages or a couple more pages here. So we've thought a lot about this. So a person is in this program, in that shared equity program, home price 200,000, down payment, like we said, zero. The payment that they're making is 1,500. We're still going through this, but household income maybe can be a bit less than that, down to even 55, but we'd say somewhere around, I'm going to say 65 as far as household income. They're in this five years. At the end of this, we're asking ourselves, hey, we've done right by them. They will come out with, between that down payment, and their principal back will project, they should come out of this with $50,000. And so can they buy a $300,000 house now? If they've got 50,000 to put down, that would equate, based on standard amortization table, et cetera, about 1,900, including the PMI and insurance and everything that they'll then have to pay, they'll need a household income of 75,000, which based on going up at 3% a year, they'd be going basically from 65 to the 75. So we're thinking through, are we setting them up for that next house, so long as they don't get in trouble with debt? So we're, we're pretty excited about that, because this is not just build a building and good luck. And can you buy a house like that? I mean, that's Schuber Mitchell, not an advertisement forum, but those are in Bentonville that they're building today. And don't forget, all the project era work and everything that's been done in Bentonville, there's now cottage cart, missing middle zoning coming, where you can have more moderately priced and sized houses. And then you can see everything that we're going to be doing in the middle. It's really the, the resources in place to help them get ready for the long-term home, periodic reviews, you can say, well, leave me alone, or something like that. But our intent is, how do you keep them, et cetera, so they're best positioned to move on? So this, this is the mechanism to get them on that escalator before it passes them by potentially forever. And then when they get off the escalator, they can get on another escalator and continue to go. So that helps you maybe to see that perspective, and hopefully you know what, the types of things that we're thinking about for folks. So the funding required for this, let me run through these pages fast. I don't want to get into who's doing what, to whom and everything, but on the public side of this, so this is where the federal money comes in, the state money comes in, the Benton County money comes in. Highly certain that we'll be able to have the right dollars coming in from the city of Bentonville as well. That's that $10.4 million. Philanthropy, a lot of different philanthropy groups around, and we're talking to a lot of them, et cetera, and no specifics on anybody, other than I'll tell you this. Our foundation will put in more than half of that 8.9 million dollars, will come from our foundation as well. So we're not just up here, you know, like, hey, well, why don't you guys go do this and good luck, or something like that? So I mean, that's a sizable commitment from our foundation. The private part really comes in, in the form of, of the debt part coming from, you know, preference is always the, the bank groups around here, et cetera. So that's the $24 million total. I know this page is kind of hard, small to see, but let me point to a few key things here. So this is the whole land piece, kind of with the, this, with you all. So here we are today for the September update. That October vote is, you know, scheduled for the 10th. We then need to get the land trust, et cetera, established. We'll, we'll start on that as soon as we know things. You know, we've spent some money, but we're trying not to go too far by end of November. And then we've got to get the donation complete by the end of the year. That becomes the driver on some of these things in the green that are real important. The most important thing, I could argue on this whole thing, other than, you know, the vote, of course, next month, is this date right here, it's the ADFA submission. First Monday of March is when you make application, sorry having to look over your shoulders. Maybe you can see it better though on your PCs. But, but you make application for the ADFA funding. So if you back up from that, you've got a, we've got a, you've got to have, you have to own the land. So that's this piece up here. You have to have the zoning done, and you have to have the designing done, and you have to have the application. So that brings us into what we need to have by that first Monday of March. This is typically how long it takes for ADFA to make that decision, and then they announce their awards. Typically, it's in August, is what just happened for our last Bentonville project, it was in August. We will do some work I didn't put on here, a little bit putting some dollars at risk as far as some civil design work, but no one's touching any ground or anything. Really, the key date then is knowing the ADFA funding, we want to be in a position where we can then start the construction and roll out. The reality is, it's typically the, the ADFA part of this, maybe we can be faster with a single family. The ADFA typically, it's two years. And the way ADFA is, is, okay, here's the tax credits, you've got two years to be having a hot dog roast. And so the, the developers, the construction folks know and understand that. So again, there is, there's good timelines and oversight in terms of making sure that things move the way they need to. And then, one of you, I think, asked this question perhaps last year, and I, you know, like, how do you put a value on what we're doing? And, you know, there's a qualitative aspect that maybe Dr. Jones will want to talk to after I, I talk through this. But this is how we would try and dimensionalize it. So I think there, I think the school went out and got an estimate of what might that piece of land be worth. We went to Colliers International Commercial Real Estate, you, you know who those folks are, and we said, hey, can you get comps and come up with an estimate? They'd say somewhere around 1.6 million dollars, that's likely worth, you know, pros and cons to it, the, the floodplain, et cetera. So first of all, you know, back to even those questions of, are, is there an enhancement being made by the nonprofit that you're making the donation to? You've got a $24 million facility, if you, if I want to call it that, that is getting built. And then what is happening with it? Well, that value to participants, section one, this was once again where one of you, or a couple of you asked, $750 per unit per month, times 12 months, times 60 units, in real dollars protected for 35 years, that's just under $19 million of savings for the folks that will be here during that 35-year period. And, and I should go on to say, I only use 35 years, Kelly, for the question you asked, because that's the ADFA time period. Well, what happens in year 36? Well, this should keep rolling, et cetera, and you've got the reserves to do that. If you look at, on the, the rental savings, you know, on the 20-piece, on the 20 units on the rental side, somewhere around 4 million, somewhere around $7 million. If you think about this, if you have people in the shared equity program, and there's 20 units, let's say, and they all start on the same day, and they're all leaving at the, the same day at the end of five years, I mean, we are going to be handing those 20 folks a million dollars across all of them. I mean, $50,000 times those 20 people. And that replicates every five years, some might be on a three-year, two-year, and the, and the number will be different. But I mean, it's over $30 million of impact you're having on, on your school employees. Like we always say, the, the parents of the students and other people that are living in that school district, it's like an 18 to 1 ROI, plus the 14 to 1 ROI. Is how we would try and mathematically describe it, if there's a better way, someone can do that. And, and what does it mean to your folks, Dr. Jones? I mean, it's more of a qualitative, I don't know if you want to speak too, or?
Well, I, we're seeking solutions so that we can provide the best staff for Bentonville School students. And we don't want to be limited to those who can afford to live here. And so that's, this is one solution to that problem. It's 40-plus, at least 40 are guaranteed to be dedicated to staff in Bentonville Schools, plus those that qualify for the other three-level housing. And so, you know, every little bit counts. 40 employees in the district is a pretty good chunk of people to try to take care of.
Any other questions on this?
Joel, I appreciate your patience, did you get your question answered?
I don't want to blow this meeting up.
Well, no, but I want to make sure you got your question.
I want to ask you some really tough questions, and then I'll explain.
Okay.
Okay, so first of all, West High School, what's the maximum kids you can have? Let's say we really start expanding the next five years.
And I'll give you accurate numbers.
Just, no, ballpark, just because I want to show you why.
Well, I'm not going to guess on that, because we have.
Capacity it's going to be?
Yeah, the capacity.
Tell me that.
3,200.
3,200, what's your capacity with BHS? Just, you'll see, it'll come out, you'll go, okay, I get it.
Yeah, I'm not going to go into numbers until I have accurate numbers in front of me, because there's more than 3,200.
How many kids are in DHS right now?
It was in the consent agenda, I can tell you.
35? And you know, I'm from Phoenix, so we always add mobiles, and we, I can take 4,000 kids, because I had to. But anyway, my point is, before we do something like this, I don't want it to hurt the district, because I walked back there, I've been talking to Thad, and because they're doing the same thing with their piece, and they have a study group, and they're doing the same thing. So I, I did a lot of research, and it's like, I don't want to be, I want to help you. And we don't want to make a mistake, so this is a time for that. Because October's really early to me, in any school district I've worked with, which is seven, that we don't, I have never seen anybody move this fast, so I'm kind of, that's where I'm coming. I'm saying we're moving too fast, that's number one. The other thing is, that piece of property, we may need at some point if we can't build another high school. That's my other point. Because you and I both know, as administrators, that you, we have to add, you know, trailers, and we put kids in class. And it's unfortunate, and it's hard to do, but that's what a lot of school districts do around our country.
I see the connection you're making now.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing. But I don't know on that value, because I tried to find the value, and I found the value of all of our other property in our district, but I couldn't find that one. So I have, I have friends that work, you know, and play golf with, they're the, my, the best guys in the world, because they'll tell you the truth. It could be from their saying, from 6.5 to 9 million, where it sits. That is prime property, because somebody built a gigantic campus like Google. There, that's what they're telling me. So I, we can argue that or talk about that later, but I'm 1.6, that didn't come up. But anyway, that's something we need to talk about. Okay, there's another red flag to me, okay? And then, with this Thad and group, they have a, a, of teachers and parents on it, and they're going through this real slow. And then with this Thad and group, they have a, a, a teachers and parents on it and they're going through this real slow and talking about what they're going to do with that property. Why don't we just take that money, sell that property and use that funding to, you know, interest, things like that? That's another idea. And, and I was going to say to you, I have a piece of paper here. If that property was worth nine million, that's a high end I know. And we have five point three, you know, percent on a treasury bill, that's four hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars a year. I can hand that out, you know, to teachers discretionary funds, there's a lot, that's, that's for the next, we, we still have that. That nine million stays with us and we use that to help kids, help teachers, et cetera. Tyson, I work with them a little bit and they, they bring people in, they have the same problem. They pay down three or four points on the interest. That's part of their contract or they want to keep you, stay five years, I'm going to pay four points on your interest on this house, et cetera, things like that. So there's a lot of things, I looked at relocation, onboarding, do we have a, a group that does that for us when we recruit teachers?
No, we don't do that.
That's something we should talk about because there are, I mean, Tyson does it, Walmart does it, there are school districts that do it. Um, I, and then like I said, I didn't want to take your meeting, but I looked at this and I just think we, we need to look at some things and find out these answers. What is that, I asked you that the first day that you and I met, what is that worth? I need to know that as a board member.
I'm happy to, I mean, I'm not commercial real estate. I think people know Colliers and they went out and they did comps and they sent it to us. I'm happy, I'll send that um, tonight to the school.
If you get that to us, I appreciate that.
Remember you got more than half of it is a floodplain that you can't do anything with.
We'll, we'll talk on the value and just say, Jill, I just want to make sure I, I, we captured because the work session, we can address a lot of these things.
Yeah, that's what I, that's why I wanted to tell you, and I didn't want to jump you then because you would be prepared for now.
We need to do some research, yep.
Right.
Yep. So you said property value, you, you had some golfing buddies tell you it was nine.
Between six and nine.
A commercial agency tell us it was a million six.
And I had a separate one, he was doing his own. I didn't know he was doing one, but actually Paul Wallace got out and it was one point five million for that as well. And so it was two different, his was one point six.
The, the other thing we may want to consider for the work session is maybe a city review because you can't, you can't put a campus on that five acres. There'll be restrictions of what you can actually use that land for. And, and in my experience, five acres in the heart of Bentonville is probably best used for multifamily, which is what you're proposing on it. Uh, but a multifamily project wouldn't get us the, probably the solution we needed. So property value, um, that was a big one. What was the other one?
Uh, the other one is just taking that, if, if the money, let's say it was five point eight million and we put it in a, and you know, we do that in the district. And I think we have fourteen in treasury bills. If you put that in, then you have that, let's say it's three, three hundred thousand. And it's discretionary funds, which as a principle, I would love to have a superintendent say, hey, Dunning, here's uh, eight thousand dollars every year and you can use it discretionally to give to your teachers that are motivating kids and doing the things we know we have to do, you know, as a school district. And that's, that's why I'm saying, let's think out of the box and that's, I, I'd rather have, you know, talk to you before we go to that work session where you're kind of at least seeing where I'm coming from.
So I think that goes back to the.
How many teachers are, I know, I, I know a very talented teacher, but I won't even, I won't bring you up and call you out. But we all know that if you give me discretionary funds, I can motivate staff, I can motivate kids.
That goes back to your property value, right?
That goes back to the property value.
A key piece because a million six isn't one percent of our budget. And a million six has very little uh, impact into a two hundred and twenty-five million dollar budget that we manage. And so when we have forty teachers that are teaching our kids, they'll have a much bigger impact than a million six. I'm not going to say that the nine million in your strategy for um, investing, it might not work. But I think the key, if I picked that up was property value, right? Because if it's a hundred million, sure, I mean, we, I mean, yeah, we probably need to reassess.
We would.
But if it's a million six, I don't, I don't know if that again is a drop in a bucket in our budget.
That's something we need to talk about and crunch the numbers with, you know, and see.
So there's, there's a couple of ways to do that. You get a broker's opinion from Colliers, from whoever Mr. Wallace did. The second thing is, I mean, I guess we could seek a three to five thousand dollar appraisal and that, that'll get you the market value of that land.
And, and I think some of us should go talk to Thad and because they're in the middle of this and yeah, it's a difference. But anyway, I always go to private schools because they do creative things. To build or to sell and then use that funding or yeah, they, they become some really creative things.
Funding is a little different than ours.
I know that, I know that, but I think it's always good to look at the competition and keep up with them.
I had a, on this, I had thought about selling to and using the proceeds and the con I kept coming back to that on, that I want to see more on is we lose control of the land. So you then have no control and it's in the high school's backyard basically. So um, that's something I think food for thought on that as well.
Yeah, and any deed restrictions you put on that land and sell lowers the value. So if you did go into a deed restriction, it would impact the value of the sale. But I think the property value, that's an important thing. That's one of the things I had highlighted early on is we're going to have to understand alternatives, right? Uh, and so how does the alternative selling land solve our problem? And, and so if we can't get there, that's why I keep coming back to this. And I don't know if, I don't, I don't know if you talked to any appraisers that you're golfing, do you give them too many?
They're, they're, they're bankers, they're sharp people.
Um, and then their relocation, onboarding, I think that's probably something we just need to look at adding to, regardless of where we go this direction. I think that's a, a good value add, so I think that's a very good point there. And you had one more?
Well, uh, I won't bring it up, you and I need to talk a little bit. So you're prepared because it's not fair to, to have all these things that, you know, I researched and talked to some parents. I was over there and the band was going, so I, you know, bumped into somebody I knew and they.
I would request that, for example, like minimum uh, square footage for building their state code, facilities code on that. So we can bring that to the workshop. Any information that you need, we can bring the two values to completely separate uh, brokers on that. We can bring what we've received in that. If there's any additional information, then if you send me an email or call me on that, then we'll gather all that data.
And I was going to come and see, I've just been crazy.
Yeah.
Well, I think, I think that's to your point, uh, the speed at which we make decisions, we've slowed these way down. I think we had our last conversation sixty-plus days ago. Um, we're, we're having, this is our second conversation, we'll have a third conversation, a work session. And so this was the perfect time to bring all those things up. I really appreciate you thinking about this and, and doing your due diligence. I think, again, that's our responsibility. So moving forward out of this meeting, we need to continue to have that due diligence done. And, and I would request that each of us takes the time to fill out a, a sheet of questions, whether that be three questions or ten questions, so that Jeff can be prepared, so that Dr. Jones can be prepared with the right data. Because I, there's no reason for us to slow it down because we didn't take the time to get our questions in writing before the next meeting. And uh, I'd certainly appreciate that. So yeah, this is our responsibility. This is a, a problem that we're going to be facing for a, a long time. This project could be a model project that provides a solution for our district, continuing to provide a, a solution to our district and others. So I definitely appreciate uh, the conversation tonight. I don't want to cut you off, Jeff, or anybody else, any other final questions?
Sorry, our, your, your head and them questions.
I, I really appreciate uh, your time. Board, I'll open it up one more time again, this is the time to bring.
I just wanted to say, I apologize, but you know, when you research things, you, I've got to give you a chance.
Yeah, absolutely.
And then um, the other thing is being from Phoenix around Indian reservations, we had issues with, with buildings that we didn't own the land. And that's something you should probably bring, you know, because we won't own the land, correct?
Correct.
Right, you, you will.
Yes.
Right, okay, and I'll need some, and.
Which is back to the deed restriction.
Right.
Et cetera.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, board, good conversation. Up next, uh, we have the parent choice model school update with Dr. Wassman.
Okay, as a step forward, I want to remind especially the public about uh, the parent choice thought, the initiative that uh, Jeff Wassom is starting within the district. But we're really working because our downtown schools, and when I talk about downtown schools, I'm talking about Mary Mae Jones, Apple Glen, TJ Sugar Creek, Ari Baker, all of those area schools were really um, struggling with trying to fill to capacity. And that's either because of the Airbnbs downtown or because people can't afford to live downtown and raise a family. And so we've experienced that for several years now. And as a result, we're forced zoning parents to take their children downtown. I'll give you an example, sending a bus way out seventy-two, uh, Big Sky, if that rings a bell, that addition, and bringing kids way down to TJ. It's not the preferred thing to do as families, their children pass several schools on their way to their new school. And so certainly this is an innovative thought to try to create some special, unique model schools downtown and offer parents the opportunity to voluntarily enroll their children in these schools. And so we've been working on this work, um, no one harder than Jeff and his team at Mary Mae because they will convert to a parent choice model school in twenty-four. And we're so excited about the work they've done and he's going to share that with you tonight.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Dr. Jones, President Carlson and members of the school board. Before I get into my prepared remarks, I just wanted to say on behalf of the Mary Mae Jones design team, uh, how humbled I am to be here tonight to represent the work that we've done in a very short amount of time. Uh, the purpose of this presentation is to provide an update about the work that has taken place so far. Prior to sharing this information, I wanted to give you an update on our first few weeks as a school. Our mission statement is to provide an environment of educational excellence where we ensure high levels of learning for each student. Uh, we define high levels of learning as grade level or higher and we talk about each student, we're talking about all students. Our four building promises that we've communicated to our community are deep and meaningful relationships with all learners, high academic expectations, targeted essential skills and protecting and expecting meaningful instructional time on task and engage learners. Our uh, school this year has launched into CKLA curriculum, which stands for Core Knowledge Language Arts. Our school has uh, we've, we've jumped right in and I just want to take just a minute to thank Ms. St. John and the teaching and learning team for all the support that they've provided us. We welcomed over one hundred and seventy-five grandparents to our grandparents luncheon, which was a first for Mary Mae Jones. We have one hundred percent of our teachers who are participating in our parent teacher organization. And lastly, I'm leaving after this uh, presentation and we have our parents at our building for our Title I Math and Literacy Night. The launch of the school year has been positive and our school is leading in several areas. We are excited about where the school is headed. This is a redesigned timeline. We've been working with a group out of um, Austin called Region Fourteen. Uh, they have been helping us with the research. We've been working with the Walton Family Foundation, the Department of Education, certainly Bentonville Schools. Uh, the project team kicked off uh, in July. Uh, we have eleven people on our Mary Mae Jones design team. We have former teachers, Bentonville residents, counselor, teacher, principal of Barker Middle School. Uh, we have a PhD student out of the University of Arkansas, Mindy Porter, uh, the director of education at the Scott family. Amazium is also serving and then we do have parent um, involvement as well. Uh, there were some community engagement activities, which you're going to hear a little bit more about on the slides that are coming up. We did a design team kickoff in August where we really set the tone for what it is, the foundational work that we wanted to do as a part of being uh, on the design team. And then we're in the process right now of participating in some virtual site visits where we've met with schools from Atlanta, Miami, Austin and Dallas, which I'll share some information with you about this evening. Uh, and then we're going to do some in-person visits. There's a group of about six or seven of us who will be traveling uh, to Austin next week. I believe board member Farmer is going to join us on that trip. We're certainly excited about having him a part of our study. The survey process overview, uh, very important for us to get community feedback and community input on what it is they want to see in the parent choice model. Uh, that launched the community survey in June of twenty twenty-three. We received over one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven survey responses. We have combed those responses, looked at those responses, studied those responses as a part of our work with Region Fourteen. The key themes in that work are that uh, the community would like to see the parent choice model have community involvement. We've seen a lot about biking, uh, we've seen a lot about trail system within our community. Uh, there was a theme of diversity and inclusion in the work that we do, new learning experiences within the school and then uh, student wellbeing and agency. There were focus groups uh, that were conducted here in the district. Some of you may have sat on those. We had business leaders, we had parent groups, we had teacher groups. There were thirty-eight school community members. They were asked questions about their experiences within the district, their thoughts about the school, their feelings about the approach that Bentonville Schools is taking. Uh, we asked a series of questions through design thinking process. This was all research-based, which gave us insight around what the school community values are for the model. Uh, we aligned the process to three models from the parent choice survey. These are the ones that spoke the loudest from the parent choice survey. Uh, those are the Montessori model, the international baccalaureate model and the dual language model. I'm not going to get into a lot of specifics about those models this evening. I did put some very, very light summary uh, narrative in uh, the packet that you should have in front of you. This is the virtual site visit list that I prepared for the presentation. This has since been updated because we have been able to get a hold of some schools that we were really, really uh, excited to talk with. Um, Ada Merritt K-eight center, we actually met with them most recently. This was an IB and dual language model. Uh, a lot of these models that are K-eight sites, they start with uh, dual language in the younger years. And then when they get into the older secondary years, they move into more of an IB model. Uh, we also spoke with Dealey Montessori Academy out of Dallas. They are a Montessori only site. Uh, Glendale Elementary School, they are on our list, but we have not made connection with them and we have not been able to have any type of visit. Lumen Education, uh, this was a very interesting conversation for us because they started as not public. Then they went to public and they've now moved back to uh, not being public. Um, so that was a very interesting conversation for our team. Uh, Magnolia Montessori for all, I think everybody who was a part of that virtual visit on August thirtieth was absolutely blown away by the work that they've done. Uh, their leader and their director has a very clear vision, uh, and idea for what they want to see at that school. We got done with that and just felt like that was a, a site we wanted to visit. So that will be a part of the work that we do with Region Fourteen in Austin next week. Um, and we're also going to be able to um, go to some other model schools within the area that Region Fourteen has contacts with. And then Benton Elementary School, uh, we just recently met with them as well. They're out of Atlanta, Georgia, very similar to the needs there. Uh, their school population was declining, uh, and they came in and brought in the IB and dual language model with an idea that people could choice into that school. And they have seen not only an increase in their school population, but they've also seen a change in diversity uh, within their school model. So that's what I have in terms of an update for now. I hope to come back at other board meetings and give you more of where we're at within the timeline, especially give you some updates of our visits. I would like to thank Dr. Jones for her support and her team. We have a call every Monday morning at nine thirty where we meet with district, uh, we meet with district office and then Region Fourteen uh, to provide updates for where we are within the work. But I'm free to take any questions that you guys might have.
Board, we have any questions for Jeff? This is certainly an interesting um, innovative idea to, to solve a couple of solutions, provide a unique learning opportunity and to see uh, the educational quality we can get from that. And then it also addresses some of our uh, understaffing of certain, or under uh, population of students in certain buildings. So what questions for Jeff, any updates?
Hey Jeff, thank you so much. Um, I'm super excited about this. I guess one question that I would have as you've been speaking to schools, um, has there been anything that you've learned in conversations that have maybe changed or given you a different perspective um, going forward in terms of where you started? If that makes sense?
Thank you for the question. Uh, yes, ma'am. I, I, I believe that sometimes we can get very siloed into where, what we're doing and where we are. Uh, and so through the research, through the site visits, it's become very apparent to the design team of how much more is out there. My strengths finder by nature are pioneer and provider. And I trust Dr. Jones and I trust her leadership team and she asks me to run through that wall, I'll do the best that I can. And so one of the things that I've been able to do in my conversations with Dr. Jones, as well as with the uh, district leadership is I would like for your support to be able to try new things. There's buildings out there that have tried new things in different parts of the country. We're going to visit them, we're talking to them. So when I come to you next month and, or the month after that and, and I ask you for a big ask and you're looking at me like, I don't know, man, I, I just asked that you would trust the work that we're doing. Uh, there's been a lot of work that's been invested and a lot of time invested. And the leaders that are at these buildings have had massive support from the people behind them to try new innovative things for the students that they serve.
No, thank you for that. I think that's, I mean, I think that we're here to try to make the best decisions and to be innovative, so I appreciate that. make the best decisions and to be innovative. So I appreciate that.
I'm going to add one thing. I had a conversation with Kristin Nafziger. She's the Executive Director of Region 14. And in our early conversations this summer, she made a comment to me about how the opportunity that Bentonville is upholding is so great. And not only because of the innovative ideas that we're going to bring to our learners within the community, but also because a lot of times when a school choice or a parent option comes to a community, that is being done to a community because the community is either in academic distress or financial distress. And Bentonville School District really has the opportunity to undertake this because we're not in financial distress, and we're not in academic distress. So it can really be seen as something that's collaborative and innovative as we pioneer a new journey for our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, for your work. And please thank your team. I know they've dedicated time.
It was a good update. They'll take us to Item C Visible Learning Model School. Ms. Tracy Wood and team are going to come talk to us about this.
All right. Well, hello, Board members and members of the community. My name is Jenna Dunham. I'm a third grade teacher at Apple Glen, and I'm so excited to get to start off our presentation about visible learning. This is something that we are very passionate about at Apple Glen. It is woven into everything that we do and every decision that we make. And so we're just thrilled to get to share a little bit more about it with you all this evening. Visible learning is all about impact. Particularly, it's about measuring and analyzing the impact that we as educators have on our students. The phrase "know thy impact" can be seen over and over again at the annual visible learning conferences that we've attended and the trainings that we've received. And there's a reason that those words are at the forefront of this mission. Visible learning is based on the research of Dr. John Hattie. He is a world-renowned educational researcher and author out of Australia, and his goal has been to determine what works best in education. So of course, we know that there are countless instructional methods and teaching strategies and tools that we have available to us as teachers and that we've used in our classrooms for many years. But what Dr. Hattie was interested in was determining which of those strategies and which of those practices make the biggest difference, which ones have the largest impact on student learning. So he compiled research studies, and he performed a meta-analysis, and his end result was a teacher's dream, if you ask us. Essentially, he created a list of hundreds of influences that do impact student learning, and he ranked them by giving them an effect size based on the level of impact that they showed. And so we can see using this barometer as a visual that the hinge point of Dr. Hattie's research is a .4. What that means is that any instructional strategy or method that has an effect size of .4 or above has been proven through research to be highly effective. And so those are the strategies that we as teachers should be putting our time and our effort and our energy into because they're going to make the biggest difference for our kids. And so isn't it powerful that we as educators have this research at our fingertips so that we can prioritize those practices? At Apple Glen, we think yes. And so we have spent the last six years learning all that we can about those influences that rank at the very top of the list. Again, those are the ones that have been proven to make the biggest impact on student achievement. And so we've led book studies on them. We've implemented them into our classrooms. They've really become the fabric of Apple Glen, and we've just seen so much growth in our students since implementing those strategies. So if you are interested in learning more about Dr. Hattie's research, we've included a QR code on your handout tonight. That'll take you to his MetaX website. There you'll be able to explore all of the domains and the influences that were included in his research and see what effect size they have. But now our Principal Tracy Wood is going to share more about our journey with visible learning and where we're headed next.
All right. I'm Tracy Wood. I'm the Principal at Apple Glen. I have just started my seventh year at Apple Glen, and I've been so fortunate to be at a school where there's a great community of teachers, families, and students. Seven years ago, whenever I was appointed the Principal at Apple Glen, Dr. Jones really encouraged principals at that time. We were really wanting to share our story about our school. So I spent that first year really learning about Apple Glen, hearing from families, hearing from students and teachers. And it was really clear very early on that Apple Glen was a really good school. It's a school that people are proud to send their students to. Teachers are excited and enthusiastic. Kids are happy. And so as I started to get, getting to know that community and really wanting to share our story, what came to mind to us is we felt like we were a really good school, and we wanted to know, what do we do to become a great school? How do we set ourselves apart as one of those really amazing schools that's embarking on new things and doing great things for kids? That's when we started doing our work around visible learning. We started out really informally by sending small groups of teachers to the visible learning conferences in the summer. And so a small group of teachers would go to that conference, bring back their learning to our school. They would do staff meetings, and we would do book studies. And pretty quickly, the momentum started. We had a lot of teachers who were, who wanted to put their energy into figuring out, what can I do that's, what am I, how's my, how am I going to spend the energy best to, to serve my students and my families? And so we started in by doing those conferences. And then we learned that we could actually go through the process of becoming a visible learning school. So we decided we wanted to do that. We were ready to jump in. We sent a large group of teachers to Las Vegas to a conference. They came back. We're so excited. We're doing book studies. And then COVID-19 pandemic hit. And at that point, we came to a crossroads of, you know, what do we do? We were faced with a lot of new challenges. And to be honest, as a leader, I just looked at my teachers and said, guys, you know, we've got a lot coming on this year. What do we want to do? And at that point, the drive within the teachers at Apple Glen to continue this work was, was huge. They said, no, we know that this is coming. We're going to figure out the pandemic, but we know now what's best for kids, and we have to stay on this journey. And so we did. We did a lot of our own learning as much as we could, you know, in-house, when we weren't able to go to conferences and get presenters in. Finally, in the fall of '21, we were able to have a building wine trading where we had someone come and train all of our staff. That really leveled the playing field. We all felt like we had a great foundation. And that's when we started our process to become a visible learning school. So we, we had a year of implementation. We applied to become a visible learning school. There's three levels. So after our first year, we applied, we had a site visit, and we were awarded the associate level. Then after one more year, we, we learned lots of things. We had more trainings. We did more book studies, had another site visit. And we were named as a partner level school this past July at the national conference. We were asked to present there at the national conference. So we had three groups of teachers that went in and presented and were able to share all the great things that we're, that we're, we're doing at Apple Glen and just the achievement we're seeing in our students. And so this year, we're hoping to, we'll be applying again. We'll have one final site visit in November. And once we have that visit in July, we expect to be named as a certified visible learning school. At this point, we're at a partner level. There's less than 20 schools in the United States who've been awarded at that level. Even when we get to that next level of being a certified school, there's, I want to say, less than five or six in the United States. A lot of this work is being done overseas in Finland and Australia and some of the other countries. And so we feel like we have embarked on some, some great new learning. We're seeing the impacts with our kids. We're seeing the engagement with our families. And our students are able to talk about their learning in a way that is unlike anything we've seen in the past. And so our next steps are to continue our journey this year. We'll have a site visit in November, and then we'll find out in the, in the spring if we make that final level certified visible learning school. But we already have lots of schools reaching out to come visit and want to see the things we're doing. So we're excited about our next steps.
My name is Kayla Herm. I'm a fourth grade teacher at Apple Glen. So going back to the quote "know thy impact." So at Apple Glen, we really want to focus on the factors that are going to have the biggest positive impact. So the first one that I wanted to highlight was school climate effects. So essentially, that's just the school culture and how, and the rapport again amongst staff, within administration, and everyone in the school community. So with trust among teachers, with one another, and their team. You can see this at Apple Glen in many ways, but one of the ways that's really shows this in a big way is our visible learning partners. So we have partners where it may be across grade levels, or they could be partnered within their team, or even with specials teachers. We go in, we observe each other, we give each other feedback, and we welcome that feedback. And by doing this, we essentially have like an open door policy. People are welcome at any time to give feedback, and we want it. We even have QR codes on our door. Please fill it out. Give me as much feedback as possible. And so that has created a very positive environment at Apple Glen. The second factor I'd like to highlight is the collective teacher efficacy. This one is huge. It has a 1.34 impact, which means that it's having more than a three-years growth impact on students. So that's essentially that teachers have a collective responsibility. It's not my class and your class. It's us as a grade level, but even more so, it's us as a school. And so you can see this in our weekly PLCs. We share our data openly. We talk about our teaching strategies. Well, it worked really well in your class. What did you do differently than I did? Can I come watch you do it? Or vice versa. My kids really mastered the skill. Can I share with you what I did? And so it's just keeping that open communication and that it's a, it's a collective responsibility. It's all of our kids. The third one is more on the students, self-judgment and reflection. That is them taking ownership of their learning. So they are aware of what they're doing, why they're doing it, and they can tell you where they are in their learning progression. So we do a lot of explicit teaching with our students to tell them what exactly each level looks like. And so, for example, we talk about a one. A one is a novice. That means you don't quite know it yet. You're still learning. And that's okay. And we stress that that's okay. A two is an apprentice, meaning I know it, but I still need some support, or I've got it, but not consistently. And then a master would be a three. I can do it all the time consistently, and I can teach someone else. And we talk about how you're not always going to start at a one, and sometimes you might start at a three, and that's okay, and that learning is just up and down. And so students have this deep knowledge, and it helps them assess themselves as they are throughout the day. And their, teachers can do this in many different ways. So students in Apple Glen have shown a major growth in this, as you can see, from 46% in August of 2021 to present, which is 96%, meaning that when you go into a room and you talk with students, they can tell you what they're learning, why they're learning it, and where they're going to go next.
I'm Amy Lowe. I'm a kindergarten teacher at Apple Glen. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about learner dispositions and what that means. So learner dispositions are characteristics of good learners. And so I want to dive into what is a good learner versus a good student. So traditionally, when we were all growing up, good students show characteristics such as sitting still and eyes on the speaker. They appear to be listening. I think even when I started teaching, those were the things that we were teaching students. And while all those things are so important, we have found that characteristics of a good learner have an even greater impact. And so three years ago, families and teachers at Apple Glen were surveyed and polled to see what were the learner dispositions that were most important. So you can see up on the screen, the effect sizes of each of those things, and we shared that with our families and our teachers. So we have, we settled on problem solving at a .84 impact, curiosity at a .74 impact, perseverance at a .77 impact, and collaboration at a .45 impact. So all of those things, you'll see, in addition to all of those things, the learning pit over to the side. And so that is something that we have embraced, and you're going to see that in any visible learning school that you go into. The pit explains the journey that the students are on throughout their learning. So those little bubbles up there, we always work with this on our kids, or with our kids, and work to build this at the beginning of the year. But when they come into learning, and they're going to achieve deep learning, they're so excited to begin with. And then as they travel through the journey, sometimes they get down in the pit where they don't fully understand, and they might even have a level of frustration. And then we teach them the tools to help themselves, and how they can help friends grow in their learning, and then achieve success. And so while a lot of students may believe that it's our job as teachers to help them out of the pit, our job is really to get them in the pit because that's where deep learning occurs. So we say a healthy level of frustration is great because that's where students learn and grow the most. Having these learner dispositions helps students have intrinsic motivation and become self-starters. And so in addition to that, students are able to use these learner dispositions well beyond our walls at Apple Glen and throughout their educational career and as they move into the workforce.
So we just want to take a quick moment to share with you a little bit about what making visible learning looks like at Apple Glen. So we have just a quick video clip. Hopefully that works for you. Will you check, will you try the link down here on the side? Yes. Oh. Okay. We can, we can see. I'll tell you also, on the handout, we, there's another QR code. We wanted to just share a few things that, that we're doing. This is, this video clip is just of a kindergarten student who's, who's talking about their learning. We can work on getting you access. But also on the QR code, you can see there's another video of students. There's a learning wall where students are assessing themselves, talking through their learning, those kinds of things. So as much as anything, we just wanted to be able to share with you what that looks like. We'll get you that video. But thank you all for letting us present tonight.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate y'all being here. Board, this was an information session. Any comments, questions?
I think it's really awesome. I've had a lot of curiosity about it, and I look forward to digging deeper in. I mean, I didn't know which direction to go, so I read up a little bit, but this will really help me kind of dive in a little more. I think it's a really exciting thing that you've done there. And not, I know Jeff left, so I can say this, I think it's, Austin's kind of cool. I'm going there next week. But I would totally go for Australia or Finland or wherever, wherever you need, wherever you need my services, you know, just let me know.
Ladies, you did a wonderful job. Nice coordination, by the way. I did notice that. But while you see the passion these four, the teachers and the principal have here, I had the opportunity to talk with their entire staff last year. And I can tell you, every single staff member has the same commitment to this. It's, it is truly quality effort, and I can tell that you've built a great culture there. So thank you. Kids and families benefit, and that's our goal. So I appreciate all the work that you do so much. Thanks for sharing tonight.
Thank you. Joel, with your ears in the classroom, did you ever use anything like this or see anything like this?
Yeah, it's really brain-based, you know, twist off from that. Susan Kavalek. But this is, looks like-
Beneficial that you, when you saw it?
Anytime you have a program that they can follow, you can bring a new teacher in, and she's gone.
That's, that's good to hear. All right, we'll keep going through the agenda. Up next, we have the Budget and Finance by Dr. Janet Schwanhauser. This is an action item board, so just be prepared. I will need a motion in a second. We haven't had those just yet. So we'll need a motion a second before we go into conversation on this. Dr. Schwanhauser, the floor is yours.
All right. So we have come to the end of Period Two of Fiscal Year '24. The fund balance for all funds is $69.6 million. That's down about $12 million from last year, and that's because of projects that we have completed out of the building fund. If you're looking only at operating funds, our fund balance is at $35.4 million. That's about $2.8 million more than last year. That's due to student growth primarily and the revenues related to that. If you look at your financial report for this month, you'll notice the budget lines have been filled in. Those budget lines reflect the proposed budget that we will discuss next.
Us with, a request for two motions, correct?
Correct. So at the close of Fiscal Year '23, the fund balance for all funds was at $69.6 million. Our expenditures came in slightly below budget, and our revenue came in slightly above budget. And because of that, we're requesting your authorization to move $9 million from the general operating fund to the building fund. As you know, we have done that for the last several years as an effort to save for future construction.
Thank you for that. So for just a matter of process and procedure, we have, we'll need two motions. So we'll need a motion D1, which will be for the August 23 financial report. And then we'll need a second motion, which I think we'll do is D2, to approve the transfer of operating funds.
I'll do D1.
Get a motion to approve the August 23 financial report.
A second.
A second. Okay. Any comments or questions on the August 23 financial report? Jennifer, if you'd call for a vote?
So this is Item 71, Tatum?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
I'm a S. Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, so we'll move on to item D2. We'll need a motion and a second to get that on the floor.
I will motion to approve the transfer to the operating fund.
It's from operating to the building fund.
From operating to the building fund, sorry.
Second.
Motion about Jeremy and a second by Joel. Comments or questions? Just, just a matter of, just to remind me, is there a maximum amount of funds we can have in that building fund?
No.
Okay, thank you.
And we can move it back out if we need to, correct?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. Jennifer, Jeremy, you have a question?
Nope, sorry, Jeremy, nope. Okay, so this is item 72, transfer funds. Tatum?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
Yes, Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, that takes us on to the next item, which is your favorite time of the year, Dr. Schwanhauser, the proposed budget.
It is a time for celebration, certainly. So, and let's talk about why it's a time for celebration. We have some good news regarding the three most important variables that impact our revenue in our school district. The first is our student membership. Our budget this year is based on the prior year's average membership over the first three quarters of the school year. And that was 18,656. And so we're continuing to experience growth at a level that is steady and manageable. And that's a good place to be. And so if you look at where we are over last year, so this time of the month, last year, we're up 387 students already. So that growth is going to continue. So student membership greatly impacts the revenues that come into our district. The other variable, the next variable, two of three, foundation funding. You'll notice that in 22, 23, our foundation funding amount was 7,413. That has increased by 2.7% to 7,618 for this school year. Again, this growth impacts our revenue positively. The third variable about revenue, assessed values within the boundaries of our school district. You know that we have 48 mills on the valuation of our school district. The first 25 mills are required by law. It's the uniform rate of tax. Our voters have approved 23 mills for debt. And then we have two mills that are dedicated to technology, maintenance and buses. And so our assessed value in our district this year has increased from 2.81 billion to 3.13 billion. That's an increase of over 11%. Preliminary numbers for 22 values to be collected in 23 are looking at increases over 8%. So the assessed value within our district continues to bring additional funding. So those three variables, all increasing. So let's look at our budget, the operating budget specifically. As you know, the state defines the operating budget as our teacher salary fund, the general operating fund and our debt service fund. So funds one, two and four. We are anticipating that our revenue in the operating fund will be 226.6 million, our expense at 225.1. And that leaves our ending fund balance at 37.1 million or 16.4%. So we're looking at exceeding our revenues over expenditures by about 1.5 million in our operating fund for the school year. So where do we spend our money in the operating fund? This is so important because our budget reflects what we value in this school district. And as you know, what we value more than anything else are the people that work for this school district and work directly with our students. So our salaries and benefits are by far the largest expense in our budget at 164.9 million. Second, debt is our next largest expense. And that is because we take out debt in this district only for new construction to manage growth. And that's what that payment reflects. And what's interesting, this is slightly down from last year. And the reason that it isn't increased is because we were able to take those savings, like what you just transferred from the operating into the building fund. Those savings are being used to construct the two wings on Bentonville West High School. There were no additional funds requested from our voters for that new construction. Materials and supplies, that's everything from pencils to low cost technology equipment at 9.4 million. Our cleaning services, 7.5 million. And electricity rounds out our top five expenses within the school district. And that makes up 92% of our total budget. So there are other funds outside of operating, of course, that are very important. I just spoke about fund three. This is our building fund. This is where we put savings. And this is also where we receive facilities partnership funding from the state. So we are anticipating expenses about 19.8 million out of fund three. That's going to include everything from the completion of those two wings at Bentonville West High School to new furniture in some of five of our schools and HVAC projects as well. Fund five, capital outlay, that's our two mills that are dedicated to technology, maintenance and buses. We'll be purchasing a lot of buses this year. Technology will make up about three and a half million dollars of those expenses. And then maintenance will make up the rest. Fund six, those are our federal grants. So these are things like special education and career and technical education that come from federal sources. We are expecting about eight million in revenues and 8.9 million in expense. Part of the, what's in that group of funds are ESSR funds. We have a little bit left of ESSR funds. We'll spend those on buses and that will be the end of our COVID relief funds this year. Fund seven, our activity funds. Those are funds that we collect from students and families for specific purposes, such as gate funds or if we collect money for T-shirts and then turn around and buy T-shirts. So that is running about 4.4 million. And last but not least, fund eight, our cafeteria fund. We're expecting to end that balance this year at about 3.4 million. What's interesting about the cafeteria funded this year is that in the spring, the state passed a law that any student who qualifies for reduced price lunch will receive the meal at no co-pay. So essentially, students who were qualified for reduced price are free. And so we were concerned about how that would impact the budget, but the legislation includes a requirement that the state send that co-pay to the school district so it won't impact our funds at all. Here's the biggest difference about this budget compared to last year's budget. It looks remarkably the same, except this year we have a 6.5% increase across all salary schedules for all staff. When you take into account that most of our staff who have not hit the top of the salary schedule get an additional step increase of 1.3%, most of our staff will be earning 7.8% more this year over prior year. And that's a significant difference in our budget. You'll also notice that we have increased revenue due to those three variables, all increasing. And again, an important part of this budget this year is that we're completing two wings of new construction at Bentonville West with no new taxes to our voters. And that is our budget presentation, as you know, posted on board docs. There's much more detail provided in the reports there and I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Board, this comes to us as an action item. We'll be approving this as our fiscal 24 budget. I'll accept a motion.
I will motion to approve the fiscal 24 proposed budget.
Motion by Jeremy.
I'll second.
Second by Tatum. Questions for Dr. Schwanhauser?
Can I, out of, I mean, the phenomenal amount of information you provide, I love it. It's really good. I was reading it again earlier and the one thing, there's one thing that really stood out to me though, which I thought was kind of odd, was that we are showing that the insurance is going to be decreasing in this report. I can't find it right now, but premium, yeah, okay, hang on.
So that's going to be a coding difference. What's, the state has decided to kick in a little bit of our property insurance this year, and that hasn't happened in the past. So a portion of our premium is going to be coded to the code that is for the state's portion versus ours. And so it may appear that it's going down. It's actually increasing quite a lot. And I think that's part of the reason that the state has made a decision to assist school districts with their insurance premium.
Okay, that's what I thought, what I remember talking about in past meetings, but it was, thank you. Well, that's what I remembered and I was like, how are we claiming a premium decrease now? It's like, we, we, yeah, I was like, we would hit the lottery apparently. The, so the, if I did the math right on the fly, it's like 73% of our budget goes to the salaries.
That's exactly right.
Remember right, that's pretty close to where it was sitting last year, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I had a question, Janet. When, in the report, it said that we're having $3.7 million in additional funding from the state for the teacher raises.
Correct.
Do you happen to know a percentage of what that covers of, of what our raises will be?
Approximately a third, yes. So that raise costs about 10.7 million, so that'll cover approximately a third.
Thank you.
Janet, question on the ADM, the money that we get per, per student. What happens, just to make sure that I'm clear on this, is that prorated in terms of if we have a student transfer in, transfer out?
It is prorated. That's a great question. So by day, so the state will calculate our average ADM over the first quarter and we'll get the full amount for that first quarter. Then for the second quarter, our average ADM, and then we'll get three fourths of the ADM amount and so on for each quarter of the school year.
The money from the state with the learns, is that just for this year or will we continue to get that every year?
What I have heard, but haven't seen in writing, is that it's three years.
And then I was curious, why do we carry a balance, say, in the cafeteria fund? Like, what do we have in money left over in there?
So it is supposed to be a not-for-profit fund, the child nutrition fund, but we are to carry three months of a fund balance in that fund. We use that to cover payroll. Well, we, we don't. We use it to cover summer bills for Aramark, then they turn and make payroll. So we carry from, we'll have three months where we have no revenue whatsoever when the kids are out. So we carry a balance for that reason.
Did I hear you say the revenues would be up 8%? Or was there the specific revenue item that would be up 8%?
8%.
From last year? Was it, was it just maybe our tax?
I think she was talking about mileage.
Assess values are up 8%, which is resulting in, okay. So, and maybe I missed what you said, the revenue increase. And I could have done the math. I really got to the expense item is where I got to and just saw that there was about an 8% increase in expenses as well.
So in calendar year 23, that, because our assessed value and tax collection is by calendar year rather than fiscal year for us. So in calendar year 23, we're about, we're up over 11% in our assessed value. And it'll bring about 7.4 million in additional revenue to the district. For next year, collection in calendar year 24, assessed values are currently, it's preliminary, up 8%.
And I hear, and I hear this frequently, well, you're getting more money. Why aren't you saving more money? But then when I look at the expenses, our expenses are up 8%. And so a lot of that additional revenue is going there. I just think that's important to point out that it's not just the revenue going up. Our expenses are going up as well. I just want to make that as a highlight.
New discovery and assessed value is typically freshly built homes that house new students that come to our district. So our expenses will increase proportionally with that revenue.
And then I guess it's maybe a, a result of inflation, but the one line item I saw in our expenses that seemed to increase the most, if I did my math, was just the GNA, general supplies and materials. It's up 60%.
Sure. So part of that, that's a coding change. Oftentimes, the state will send us an email and say, next year, what you previously coded to technology supplies will now be coded to general supplies. And that's what has happened there. It's a coding change.
And then I think year after year, I always like to emphasize this and you did a really good job. You beat me to the point this year. You went even further because you, you found 95% of our budget is fixed expenses, which 75 is about benefits. Another 10% is, is debt service. So there's not a lot of wiggle room in our budget. And I certainly appreciate your ability, since I've been on the board, of being able to forecast and put together a really good budget that leaves us a little bit to put into savings each year. So my accolades and thankfulness for you and, and the role that you do for the school district. I don't have anything else, Board? All right, with no more questions, we'll go to vote.
Okay, item 70, the proposed budget. Tatum?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is our last action item. We have one more informational item today. Mr. Hoover is going in and I think he's bringing some guests as well, is going to talk to us about the annual bullying report.
Yes, sir. So good evening, Dr. Jones, President Carlson, members of the board. Yeah, we have two parts tonight to our annual bullying report. The first part is what you see on the screen right there and what you have in front of you. And that is our, what we bring every year because by board policy, we are to give you student discipline data, including the number of incidents and bullying reported actions that took place every year. So obviously the school year 22, 23, when we look at this chart that I've provided for you, I'll kind of walk you through that. In elementary in 22, 23, we had 44 incidents tracked that could have been bullying. Four of those were confirmed to be bullying. And of course, if you read down the list there in 22, 23, in middle level, 34 incidents, 15 were confirmed to be bullying. In junior high, 27 incidents, nine were confirmed to be bullying. And then in high school, 19 incidents and five were confirmed to be bullying. So it gave you a total of 33 incidents last school year of bullying that our administrators worked with to help those students who might have been engaged in those situations or received unfortunate circumstances. As you, as I have always mentioned to our board, actions taken can vary, anything from a warning to a student all the way through out of school suspension and things in between. I do give you three years worth of data on there. I do mention, of course, that in 2021, that was still a lot of students out for COVID. That's why I notate that a little differently. And lastly, on this report, as we have now for three years, we use a instant tracker daily. Our administrators use this so that every time we have an allegation of bullying, we are tracking that from the very get go through the investigation, all the way to conclusion. So that's the information I have as far as the annual bullying report from data set. The second part of this presentation is really more about the preventions that take place at our school for prevention or anti-bullying. And we brought some friends here, our administrators from our schools. We have Mrs. Allison Smith, who's going to come up in a moment and talk about what they do at elementary. Mr. Johnny Parker from Ruth Barker, he'll talk about middle level, of course. Mr. Josh Turpin, one of our new administrators out at Grimsley. And then Dr. Marley Purdy, one of our new administrators at BHS. I think she had some change early in the year, so it's kind of evolved into BHS in the last couple of months. But they'll come show us. Mr. Nichols, if we have that PowerPoint, if we can pull it up, please, I'd appreciate that. I think I can scroll from here, I hope, or maybe you can. The first slide is really introductions of these fine folks, which I just did. And I think he's getting that to work.
And administrators, thank you for your patience. I know it's been a little long tonight. You've been very patient. I know you have families at home, but I also want to commend these administrators because they've been in our leadership network. And so they're part of our pipeline. They do exceptional jobs where they are, but they aspire to move on to other roles eventually.
Yes, ma'am. Well, Mrs. Smith, why don't you come up? You'll be first. And so the next slide, if I can, there we go. Our schools work to prevent bullying by engaging students in direct dialogue across several platforms. So there are different methods that our schools use with the grade level that may be more appropriate to the, to the age of the students. But Mrs. Smith's going to talk about elementary examples and we'll kind of just roll through them a little bit. So, Mrs. Smith?
Good evening. I am Allison Smith, Assistant Principal at Central Park. So I wanted to mention a couple of things. The first one is our use of conscious discipline. So we use that program to help students learn calming strategies. So when they are faced with emotional upset, they have the skills to handle that. We also use that to help them learn how to use their assertive voice. And so what we do for that is we use I messages in our schools. An example of that might be, I don't like it when you pushed me out of the way. Next time, walk around. So what that does, it helps teach the students how to use their voice so that they can advocate for themselves in areas of conflict. The second thing is see something, say something. So of course, we always encourage our students, if anything makes them uncomfortable, that they are reporting that to a safety keeper, which is a trusted adult. And lastly, our counselors do guidance lessons with all of our students. And what they focus on with those lessons are the difference between behaviors that are rude, mean, or if they are behaviors that do meet that definition of bullying. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Parker?
Dr. Jones, President Carlson, distinguished members of the board, thank you for the opportunity. At middle school, we believe we are the last best chance for students to fall in love with school. Because of that, we take this very seriously. Kids are not going to fall in love with school or even learn if they don't feel safe and included. So we continue the great work that's begun in elementary. We have lessons that are taught by administrators and counselors. And we like to emphasize, because we want it to be a place they enjoy, the positive behaviors. And so our intervention and our support really focuses on that. We continue the See Something, Say Something campaign. continue the See Something, Say Something campaign. You'll find those posters spread over every middle-level campus, and it does work. Of course, when you're a victim of bullying, you may not be the first one who wants to say something about it, but we have parents who are working as partners with us that pick up the phone and let us know. And we found that friends and witnesses will say something, too. So I'll end with a quick story because two weeks ago, a sixth-grade student said something very, very bad on one of our buses to a fifth-grade student. That fifth-grade student told his friend at the bus stop. His friend immediately said, "You need to go straight home, and you need to send emails to your teachers. I'm going to run home, and I'm going to do the same thing." So the fifth grader went home, and he sent three emails, or one email to his three teachers. His friend said, "This is important." He ran home. He sent an email to his three core teachers. He sent a second email to two counselors. He sent a third email to myself and Mr. Hitt. And just to make sure every base was covered, he sent an email to his fourth-grade teacher at RE Baker. So we are doing everything we can to make sure our students and every stakeholder in Bentonville knows that their students are safe and included here in our schools.
Mr. Turpin?
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Dr. Jones. Thank you, members of the board, for letting us speak tonight. It's funny, because Bentonville does such a great job coming as an outsider into Bentonville schools of the gradual release method, with how kids are changing classes in fifth grade to sixth grade to seventh grade to eighth grade, up to the bullying prevention programs that we have in place. So one thing that stands out for the junior high is students have a little bit more active roles and participation with outside things involving the school. So such as sports, such as fine arts, things like that. So we noticed that ownership in the school, and students are participating, they show ownership, and they gain those positive relationships with each other and positive relationships with the adults on campus. Another thing that we do is monthly guidance counseling lessons. So our guidance counselors are pushing in either to the multipurpose room to talk to groups about social skills and bully prevention. We also practice our See Something, Say Something. We've got many successful stories, as Mr. Parker stated, where students are emailing their teachers, by assistant principals, principals. We get a lot of messages from parents as well, so we keep that open communication. We also talk about what it is to be rude, mean, and bullying. So being able to identify those three things is an important factor for students to become self-advocates for themselves, which we're really trying to focus on for the junior high level as they get older. Thank you.
And last but not least, Dr. Purdy.
Hi. Good evening. I apologize for my voice. Back to school, cold everywhere, so I'm, I'm going to try to get through it without cutting out. I know, I'm, well, I saw it, right? So in addition to the things that my colleagues talked about, when we get to the high school, we really try to target different grade levels with focus, focus areas. So whenever we, for our ninth graders, we really focus on personal success skills with empathy, how we can be empathetic, how we can have empathetic, or how we can do empathetic listening with each other. And then in 10th grade, we take that a step further in the empathetic listening, and we really target gossiping and how that's connected to bullying and how our words impact those around us. In 11th grade, we really focus on cyberbullying, online anonymity, and a new word that I learned this year, the disinhibition effect. If you don't know what that is, like I did not, it is the term for the lack of restraint one feels when communicating online versus in person. There is actually a term for it. So we know that oftentimes, whenever we communicate online, that anonymity and that computer really allows us to be more vulnerable and say things that maybe we wouldn't say in person, whether good or bad. And so we talk with that about our kids and, and the effects that that has. And then when we get to 12th grade, we really want to target that self-advocacy and setting boundaries as, as they enter adulthood and into the workforce. So in addition, I will say, each high school does some different things, too. We had a guest speaker today for our full ninth-grade class that came from Arissa Health to talk about bullying and empathy. We also really try to focus on building relationships through not just counselors, but we have student success counselors, we have student advocates, our deans. And I think especially one thing I've really noticed since I've been at the high school, our SROs are amazing. They don't just come in to be an SRO. Every time I'm on campus, our SROs are talking to kids. They're making relationships, and they're, they're building those bonds that go beyond just discipline. So I really think at the high school, we've done a really good job at forming those relationships with multiple staff members.
Thank you, Dr. Purdy. And I did tell her when we were talking about this presentation that y'all would definitely want to know what disinhibition effect was, because I didn't know what it was either. So that being said, y'all, this was an informative session. Do y'all have any questions for these fine folks about the information you've heard tonight?
No questions? Y'all did a great job explaining all that.
Absolutely.
Well, I appreciate y'all's time putting that together and coming and sitting through our board meeting to, to discuss our annual bullying. I think if we're in the buildings, you can see that our administrators and teachers are generating or in fostering a kind environment. And so an act of kindness goes a long way, and you can see that throughout all levels. So thank y'all very much for being here tonight to, to discuss that.
Thank you, Board.
Okay, Board, that takes us through the content agenda. Up next is comments from the board, and I will be consistent. Becky, you're first.
I don't have any comments tonight.
Joel?
I just want to say, and I apologize, guys, that I dig so deep and I, but, you know, the story and the things I've done and seen in school districts, you just, you want to make it right when you're at this spot. And I apologize, sometimes it seems coercive. I don't know if that's my, being an athlete and a coach my whole life, I don't know. But I don't ever, you know, want to take our meetings over like that, and I apologize for that. But I just wanted him, you know, when we go in, be able to talk to those points and not be...
You did exactly what this meeting was for, Joel. We asked you to repair it, and you did that. So don't ever apologize for doing your job. Jeremy? Tatum? Jennifer? Dr. Jones? All right. I'll, I'll follow it up. No comment. The board will now retire into executive session to consider two things tonight. The first is matters of personnel. The second item is to begin Dr. Jones's evaluation for the 22, 23 school year. That will begin tonight. For those that don't remember, we had this conversation in November of last year and set this as the timeframe for the annual evaluation. So with that, we'll retire to executive session. Thank you. Okay, the board has returned from executive session. I will accept a motion to approve the personnel package as presented. Motion by Tatum? Second by Becky. Comments, questions? I'll turn it over to Jennifer.
Okay. So this is approval of the personnel recommendation. Tatum?
Yes.
Joel?
Yes.
I'm a yes. Jeremy?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Approved.
I'll accept a motion and a second to adjourn. Motion by Jeremy?
Second.
Second by Joel. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned. Thank you very much.